Go ahead.
Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Rialto City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 27, 2024. This is the regular meeting of the council and this meeting is conducted, conducted with the Rialto Authority, the Rialto Housing Authority and the Rialto Acting Act as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Madam City Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Mayor Protem Karysodis.
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Present.
Trust Councilmember Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Baca.
Present.
City Attorney Eric Bell.
Present.
And City Manager Michael Milhouse.
Present.
And now if I can get our city attorney to lead us into closed session.
I'd be happy to do that, Mayor Protem. Closed session has four items on it tonight, and I would like you to add an additional item. The ones printed on the agenda are first, conference with legal counsel with regard to anticipated litigation. There are ten of those items. Nine of those are either worker comp or IDR issues, and there's one item of overpayment on that. The other three are all conference with real property negotiators. The properties are described in the agenda. Your labor or your agency negotiator tonight is Kolby Katari, the Director of Community Development, and the negotiating parties are listed with regard to each one of those. The one item that I would like you to consider adding tonight is Mariela Valdez et al. versus City of Rialto et al., case number CIV SB 2200927. This is a police case. You have had a briefing on this quite some number of months ago. It's back. We're headed into motion for summary judgment and trial, and we have some settlement authority that needs to be discussed. This item was intended to be on the agenda. It didn't arise until after the printing of the agenda, and we do need to take action on it tonight if we want to discuss settlement.
Move approval to add the item?
Second. I got a motion by Councilmember Scott and a second by Councilmember Trujillo to add that item on there. Anything else?
That is it. That completes it. There are no members of the public present, and we've not received any letters or anything to comment on.
Okay, see, no objections. The motion carries. And can I get a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Trujillo, second by Councilmember Baca. We're now in closed session.
Mr. Mayor Protem, can we also add that the mayor is going to be joining us later?
I'll let the record reflect that. Councilmember Scott, I'll let the record reflect that the mayor would join you in closed session, and then if I can have the time that she will join in close from one of her coworkers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, this is the regular meeting of the Rialto City Council. Rialto City acting as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency, to the Rialto Utility Authority and the Housing Authority. Madam City Clerk, can I please get a roll call?
Mayor Protem Carrieldos.
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Present.
Councilmember Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Baca.
Present.
City Treasurer Ed Correa.
Present.
City Attorney Eric Vell.
Present.
Intrum City Manager Michael Milhouse.
Present.
And let the record reflect that the mayor would not be present, she has food poisoning, so...
Great, now if you guys can all please join Councilmember Scott in the pledge to our flag and stay for the invocation by Pastor Harry Bar- Bratton.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, first I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to invoke the blessings upon this council meeting tonight. I pray, Father, that tonight as they meet and work through their agenda and proclamations, it should guide them, help them, and strengthen them, Father. I pray you give them boldness and bravery and confidence and courage after wrestling through some tough agenda items and as they make the decisions, Father, I pray that it's based on a sound information. They can make decisions that's going to help enhance and cause the city reality to flourish, to grow, where families, businesses want to come and be part of the great city of Rialto. Mayor went here tonight, Father, know their value, appreciated. Even though things may not go their way, still know that they're heard, valued, and appreciated. This I pray in Jesus's name, amen.
And now, Mr. Attorney, can you please read out the close session?
I'd be happy to do that, Mayor Protem. There were four regular items on your close session this evening. The first was a conference with legal counsel with regard to ten items of anticipated litigation claims. Counsel did go through all of those and gave direction to both the risk manager and to special counsel. The other three items were conferences with the city's real property negotiator. Counsel completed each one of the three discussions and gave direction to the real estate negotiator director, Colby Catari. Previously, city attorney requested that the counsel add an item of subsequent need to the agenda. The counsel did add the case of Valades et al versus City of Rialto et al. Received a briefing from the city attorney's office and gave direction to the city attorney with regard to that case. And that completes my report, thank you.
Thank you, that brings us to presentation and proclamations. And Councilman Trujillo is going to help us out with that.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Good evening, I'm presenting a... Good evening, Mayor Protem, our councilmembers here, everyone else in the audience. Wanted to bring up our staff from the Senior Center, are they here? Oh, come on, Terry. I know our mayor couldn't be here, so I'm presenting this proclamation that she was originally planned to do. So it's National Senior Day. And so it's a proclamation from the City of Rialto, number seven of the series 2024. So I'll just read the proclamation, it says, "Whereas National Senior Day is observed annually on August 21st, dedicated to honoring and celebrating the invaluable contributions of older adults to our communities and society as a whole. And whereas seniors are an essential part of our community, enriching our lives with their wisdom, experiences, and the valuable roles they play within families and neighborhoods. And whereas the City of Rialto recognizes and appreciates the significant achievements and lifelong contributions of our senior residents, whose dedication and hard work have helped build and strengthen our community. And whereas it is important to celebrate and show our gratitude for the positive impact that seniors have on our lives, as well as highlight the importance of supporting their needs and well-being. And whereas this day provides an opportunity for all residents to express their respect and admiration for our senior citizens and to encourage efforts that enhance their quality of life and ensure they remain engaged and active members of our community. National Senior Day. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rialto City Council to proclaim August 21st as National Senior Day in the City of Rialto. And it's signed by Mayor Deborah Robertson, as well as our city clerk Barbara McGee. Do it this August 27th, 2024, presented to you. Thank you so much, Terry, for all the work that you're doing at the...
Thank you.
At the Grace Fargus Senior Center. Before you go, I wanted you to say a few words about some of the, you know, great activities that you have at the Senior Center and how you're constantly trying to engage our community.
Okay, so if you've ever been to the Senior Center, you know we have special events and activities almost once a month. Last Wednesday, we did celebrate National Senior Citizen Day, and we had a senior social. It was the first time we've ever celebrated. Moving forward, we will continue to celebrate it, it was well received. The seniors had a really good time. We had live music, we had nacho bar, we had desserts for them. And so it was really, really nice, they had a good time. Coming up on the month of September, we're gonna, the Friends of Rialto Senior Center, they're gonna do Ice Cream Social. And that will be on September the 5th. On September the 12th, we'll have our annual Senior Health and Wellness Expo. So those are just a couple of things that are coming up at the Senior Center. So, we love the senior, and on behalf of all the seniors at Grace Fargus Senior Center, we thank you guys for this.
Didn't you just have the luau that was just held?
We had a summer barbecue luau there, that's a, we have a barbecue, an annual summer barbecue every year, so we had, this year, the theme was luau, so...
Yeah, I was in attendance.
Yeah, we thank you for coming out. Councilmember Baca came out, Mayor Deborah Robinson and her intern came out, so it was great. And for our National Senior Social Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. came out, and he supported us as well. So, we get a lot of support from the community. Rialto Rotary Club is one of our biggest sponsors. They'll be sponsoring our Halloween dance, so we know we can always look towards them. The Rialto Lions Breakfast Club will be participating in our Senior Health and Wellness Expo. They'll have a couple of booths there, so we just are so grateful for the support that we get because we do this for the seniors.
Great, and if you'd like to stay up here with me, I'd like to honor a couple of senior citizens that we have certificates for, so we have Maria Mang.
I'm not sure if she was able to attend.
All right, well, call the next person up, Grace Guerra. She up here? All right, we'll just keep calling them out. Jose Guadalupe Valdez. Nope, and we have one more, we have Joe Elliott. Oh, thank you.
Oh, yay! And I need to give something for her as well.
So as you're coming up, I'm going to read your certificate. And again, this is from the city councils. "In recognition of your lifelong residency and invaluable contributions to our community, for ninety-five remarkable years, you have been a cherished member of our town, embodying the spirit, history, and heart of our community. Signed by our mayor Deborah Robertson, myself, councilmember Trujillo, our mayor Protem Andy Corsalis, and councilmembers Ed Scott and Joe Baca. And so we present this to you. Thank you so much for being part of our community."
And then as part of Heritage Day, we want to give you this goodie bag full of a lot of goodies for you, so enjoy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight.
And thank you all.
And we'll make sure they get these.
Thank you.
I just want to say that that is my lovely neighbor there. And I, I'm so grateful that you are so involved in the city. And I always, I didn't know you were coming today, otherwise I would have picked you up. I told you that last time. But thank you for joining us, and just to all the organization and all the, it's... I've been there a few times, and all the events are just remarkable. The organization and the dedication to all these events, and they're so well planned out. I mean, the themes on them are always great. So thanks for all the hard work you guys are doing there, and keep up the good work. I know that there's a lot of seniors that come from other cities and come and join us here because their Senior Center doesn't have as great activities as we do. So I just want to thank you guys for the hard work that you do and the dedication that's seen all the way from Corona, last time I met someone from Corona. And so, thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Bravo, thank you.
And do we have another presentation?
No, we just have oral communications.
Okay, so we'll move right on to oral communications.
We have Joan Hayes.
Oh, try again. Joan Hayes, San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District. What Valley does is import water via the state water project, the canal you see when you drive up the five freeway going north. The voters long ago decided this was a good idea and bought into the system. While we have a healthy set of groundwater basins under both Rialto and San Bernardino, these remain low in water despite the recent good rain years. Without this imported water, we would have not, we would not have the water that we need for quality of life here. About twenty-five percent of our water comes from the state water project, either directly or indirectly. To pay for this system, we took out a mortgage that is paid for on your property taxes. This mortgage will be paid off in 2035, but like with your house, maintenance and repairs are ongoing even after the mortgage is paid. It is the goal of Valley and the Board of Directors to keep this amount as low as possible while still maintaining the funds needed. This is reserved money and cannot be used for anything but the state water project. We had a major windfall when redevelopment was discontinued. So the fund is good right now. Just recently, about two months ago now, we lowered the rate. This is four times that we have lowered the rate in the last eight years. This is the lowest it has been since 2001. Just wanted to let you know, thank you.
Next person we have to speak is Veronica Perez.
Hello, everyone. Today I will be reading you an excerpt from Hala Rahit. She is the first American diplomat to resign in opposition of the U.S.'s Gaza policy after 18 years of service. She is a subject matter expert in her field, and I believe we should listen to subject matter experts like her who are calling for our government to stop the genocide in Palestine. Quote, "Last week, Secretary Blinken traveled again to the Middle East in an attempt to secure a ceasefire, and again he failed to do so. While President Biden and VP Harris have maintained for weeks that the time for a ceasefire is now, the administration refuses to shift its failed militaristic strategy to achieve one, and instead continues to send more lethal weaponry to Israel. No matter what side you believe you may be on." One second. "It is clear that the policy is not working, and it is not helping anyone. It is a threat to U.S. national security interests. It has been devastating to over 2 million innocent civilians in Gaza. It has not succeeded in securing the release of Israeli hostages, and it has significantly destabilized the Middle East to the brink of an all-out war. The latest exchanges between Israel and Hezbollah should concern everyone, as Iran continues to assert it will retaliate against Israel for its assassination into Iran. The policy must shift now. Every American should insist that the administration and our elected representatives abide by U.S. laws on arms transfers. The administration, instead of finding ways to skirt regulations, needs to fairly and transparently enforce Leahy Vedding, the Arms Export Control Act, the Foreign Assistance Act, and this would condition and halt U.S. military assistance to Israel. This is the leverage required to secure a ceasefire from both sides. Without it, the failed and disastrous status quo will remain. The administration argues that the latest $20 billion in arms package announced for Israel seeks to deter Iran. It does the opposite. It emboldens Netanyahu to continue his genocide in Gaza, attack Lebanon, and continue to instigate Iran. The entire region, including former Israeli high-ranking officials, scholars, and activists, and most of our allies, recognize that Netanyahu and his far-right extremists want all-out war." And the administrat- One second. "The United States must show diplomatic leadership by using its most powerful leverage, conditioning and suspending military assistance to Israel, standing by its values, rejecting and halting genocide, and cooling regional tensions. That is what will deter Iran and Netanyahu, avoid regional escalation, and secure a ceasefire. Only then will Harris have a chance to win the election in November." Okay, I'm not gonna read that, but I think that at this time, we are hearing the word ceasefire from the current administration and the Harris, Vice President Harris, and ceasefire has become a buzzword that actually means nothing, because we're seeing that almost a year of what has been going on, which is sending bombs to the Gaza Strip that is in fact annihilating that place and those people. If you don't see it from the headlines, if you're ignoring it, whatever the case may be, our tax dollars are going to fund it, and it is a genocide, whether you share that opinion with me or not. A 10-month-old baby has contacted Polio for the first time in the Gaza Strip after it was eradicated for 25 years. Those are conditions set to kill a population, if not by bombs, by, by, by instances where they don't have access to clean water, food, medical necessities. And it is our job as Americans to make sure we live by the values we say we believe in. We need a ceasefire, and we need an arms embargo on Israel, and I'm asking you to meet with me to discuss it, because I'm going crazy and I don't understand our country's silence in something that is completely horrific. I will be here next city council meeting. I hope you read my email the next time I send you guys one. Have a good night."
Next speaker we have is Esme Shay Himmens. Okay, Hinton? I'm trying to read you. Okay.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Pro Tem. It's Etishay Hinton. No worries, they called for clarity earlier. No worries at all. I'm Etishay Hinton. I am the community organizer for the Inland Empire Black Worker Center, and I am here to introduce our UCLA Care Fellows, who are here to give the City of Rialto information about the work that we at the Inland Empire Black Worker Center are doing on behalf of black workers in the Inland Empire. So with that, I introduce Sophia Middleton and Saul Mario Alvarez, to give you guys information on our work and what we're doing for black workers in your city.
What school was that from?
Where the Inland Empire?
No, the school.
Oh, they are from the UCLA Care.
Oh, great school, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Robertson. Well, she's not here today, but council members, thank you for giving us the opportunity and time to speak with you today. My name is Sophia Middleton, and my coworker is Saul Mario, and we are Freedom Fellows from UCLA, and are here on behalf of the Inland Empire Black Worker Center. We want to share some information on the work that we are doing in the IE. Our mission is to build a black worker-led movement that is success, that successfully organizes for quality jobs, economic and social mobility, and advocates for policies through cultural practices that ensure black workers, their families, and the community thrives. Our vision is to create a just and equitable labor market where black workers can thrive free from discrimination and systemic barriers. Our goals are to empower black workers through advocacy, education, and organizing, making sure that black workers have access to family-sustaining wages, equitable employment opportunities, and safe working conditions. The vision and mission of the Inland Empire Black Worker Center is to have a black worker-led movement. Our center was created in response to the Ain't No Sunshine Report, which has helped us to better understand what black workers experience at work and in the labor market within the Inland Empire. The report found that there is a steady migration among black working class, among the black working class throughout California, which directly affects the IE, since it's shown to have a dramatic impact on the population. The Ain't No Sunshine Report also recovers, covers the discrimination and wage disparities that black workers experience in the Inland Empire across all job sectors. Without jobs, many black individuals are unable to care for their families, much less for themselves. The report was written in collaboration with local community organizers and educators and faith leaders. There are, there is much more information on the website about the Ain't No Sunshine Report at iebwc.org. We are here today because the report found Rialto to be the seventh-most black-populated area in the IE.
The Inland Empire Black Worker Center has engaged in policy advocacy, system change, civic engagement, and power-building efforts in the Inland Empire. Additionally, our center has been instrumental in advocating for SB 1340, which would empower local agencies to provide quick solutions to discrimination complaints, enabling workers to recover lost wages and return to work quickly. Our center's efforts have extended to promoting fair wages and workplace safety through continuous engagement with the Labor Commissioner's Office and local and state policymakers. The Inland Empire Black Worker Center has actively participated in lobby days in Sacramento, focusing on the reparations and funding for black-led organizations. Furthermore, our civic engagement is evidenced, is evident through voter registration drives, educational workshops, and voter education campaigns aiming to increase political participation among black residents. Recently, we attended the Black Worker Center's Lobby Day for SB 1340 on the lawn of our state's Capitol in Sacramento. Nationally, the IE BWC attended a Lobby Day in Washington, DC. Locally, we regularly engage in legislative visits and public comment sessions for municipalities, schools, districts, and utility agency board meetings. In effort to build our worker power for organ, in, in effort to build worker power, our organization has opened up a three-tier membership program, which can be, which can be a program where workers can be involved based on their level of commitment. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members for your time. We look forward to working with black individuals in your city.
Thank you.
That concludes the oral communications.
Okay. Thank you. And now that brings us to the City Council to consider removing or continuing any items on the agenda.
I'd like to pull F4 for discussion.
Okay, so I got F4. Anything else, council?
I don't want to pull any, but I, I noticed that there was one here for the Burt'saw Park. You know, I agree with it, but I also think that there's another problem that we need to address there, and that's the water leak that we have in the scoreboard that needs to be repaired there at Burt'saw Park too as well. Other than that, I, I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm here on behalf of F4.
My, my question is, I see the 11 kind of intersections that you're working on, and I see Riverside Avenue kind of listed on there. Part of it is because there's so much traffic, I would assume. But one of the areas that I was hoping to kind of see if maybe you could possibly focus on is Riverside Avenue and Senior Way, where you have three different senior facilities with a lot of pedestrians crossing Riverside Avenue to, to shop at the Rialto Marketplace. I was hoping that you could add that as a, as a location, so that maybe we could add senior crossing on there with flashing lights, just to draw more attention to the pedestrians that cross there frequently.
Yes, and actually, that you mentioned it, after the staff report was already uploaded in the system, this was a location that was identified for potential pedestrian improvements, so we will definitely incorporate it in the grant.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
With those notes, I'd move to approve the consent.
Second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Trujillo, second by Councilmember Scott. Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries. That brings us to Tab 1, this is a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. This evening, I am requesting that the City Council conduct a public hearing for the placement of liens for delinquent refuse collection accounts for the first quarter of 2024. On July 23rd, the City Council approved the request to set a public hearing for this evening, August 27th, to review and consider the placement of liens related to delinquent refuse. Notices were mailed to the owners of the property shown in Attachment 1 on August 2nd, 2024. At this time, I request that the City Council conduct the public hearing, take public testimony, and consider placement of liens against the delinquent properties identified on Exhibit A of the resolution, and adopt Resolution Number 8285, authorizing the filing of liens against the properties for delinquent refuse accounts with the San Bernardino County Auditor, Controller, and Recorder's Office. This concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, is there anyone that would like to speak on this?
No.
Move to close the public hearing, second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Scott, a second by Councilmember Baca. All in, hearing no opposition, motion carries. And now, do we have a motion to?
Move approval of Resolution 8285, second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Scott, and a second by Councilmember Trujillo. Hearing no opposition. The motion carries, and the public hearing is closed. That brings us to new business on Tab 2.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. Stephen DiPuccia here for the Utility Department. Tonight's item is a receive and file, but it was brought to you at the request of the Watersub Committee. It is your annual water confidence, consumer confidence report. This is a requirement of the Clean Water Act adopted back in 1996, that each year any water purveyor needs to provide this information to its customers, so they understand the sources of their water and the water quality. It's a, generally it's a routine item that comes forward. The report is indicating that you're meeting all drinking water standards, there's no issues there, but it was requested to be brought to you, because there was one constituent that was higher than last year, and that constituent is arsenic. And so by its very nature, arsenic has a certain connotation to it. It's often present at very low levels in drinking water that are, are not exceeding any health standards. So there was just a question to come and bring that to you tonight. So we have Viola, who is part of the concession agreement, who operates your systems, and can give some insight as to that particular item. So with that, I'm gonna call up Viola to give you a short presentation on the item.
Thank you, Stephen. Good evening, council members, city staff. Today I'm here to discuss arsenic, a contaminant above the public health guidelines. What is arsenic? Arsenic is a semi-metal element in the periodic table, and it is a naturally occurring element that is found in combination with either inorganic or organic substances, and are found in soils, sediment, sand, groundwater. The public health goal for arsenic in drinking water is 0.004 parts per billion. The maximum containment level, or MCL, for arsenic is 10 parts per billion. Therefore, safe levels of arsenic in drinking water is any level under 10 ppb, zero being the safest. Arsenic was found to occur in only one groundwater well, City Well 2, and not in any other wells. It should be noted that City Well 2 is blended with additional sources that contain no detection of arsenic. Facts, safe levels of arsenic has been detected in our drinking water. Jumped a couple pages. This graph on the screen here shows the detection levels in the City Well 2 for arsenic since 2011. I was called here today to discuss the hit that came back from our three-year sample required at the City Well 2 in March of 2023. As you can see, it came in at a 9.7. But between what you see on the screen here, the 5.0s, which is the average across the last decade, this number is truly not representative of what is reaching our customers. It is important to understand that, again, this blends with water within the reservoir, and the level that hits at internal samples at customers' homes in respective areas to the home are much lower than what you see on the screen. So a 9.7 is roughly in the six micrograms per liter, and the fives are basically non-detect, which falls within the 2 to 3 range. So what happened in March of '23? That well was offline for three months, undergoing repairs due to Southern California Edison's impacts with new circuit breakers associated with the infrastructure below that well. Constant issues were occurring, putting the well offline. So after three months, SCE figured out the situation, we made all the repairs necessary, we brought it back online, which was exactly at the same time of our three-year sample. It appears that the level reported that the well should have ran to waste longer. Now, why did we go 24 hours and then take our sample? Because that is what is standard in our operation, based off of start and start times associated with the well. So, a longer duration of running the water to waste or to recharge would have provided a representative sample, just like the state of normalcy it's been over the last decade. And it's important to mention that the levels of arsenic can vary based on the dynamics of the aquifer that is supplying the water in the Lidl Creek Basin. Actions were taken. DDW was notified immediately upon the 9.7 hit. Quarterly samples were requested by DDW. Those samples have come back, and I'll go back to the prior slides, specifically to show you the drop from the quarterly samples, back to the state of normalcy. We have two more samples to take from a quarter perspective in September and December. Upon that, we will return to the three-year samples. DDW was actually on-site just a week ago, doing their sanitary survey, and we talked through this item very much so, and they were very appea, pleased with what we had done, from an action item taken, explaining the situation, and of course, taking necessary steps for, to ensure that this does not happen again. I open the floor to questions, if you may have any this afternoon.
With pleasure, the board, Councilmember Scott.
Where is City Well 2 located?
At the edge of the Lidl Creek Basin. We were just there today, getting a little bit further understanding of how the At the edge of the Lidl Creek Basin. We were just there today getting a little bit further understanding of how the water flows and just understanding the strata and the things of that nature.
What what percentage of the city's water is coming out of well number two?
I don't have that information for you, councilmember, but I.
Can you please get that and have it submitted to the Water Subcommittee?
Yes.
Additionally, I would like to ask the question of why we would not shut that well down and pump from other areas?
It wasn't necessary due to it not exceeding the MCL, which is a safe level for arsenic. And remember, again, it blends, so it's not really at a nine point seven.
First, first off, you can talk about blending all you want, but all that is is dilution. That's, in my opinion, is not acceptable. We should be taking a look at shutting that well down, period.
Okay, look into that, absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Trujillo?
Yeah, I I I'm in agreement with that, but also I was looking at some of the other stuff. How are we doing with the with the lead levels?
The lead levels are at a non-detect across the city.
Okay, so so the levels that we we probably have from coming out of the facility are probably based on the plumbing?
Very much so, very likely. In addition to that, we are in the process of performing an L C R R inventory. That's a new regulation standard that's coming out from D D W and the State Water Board, essentially establishing an inventory of all lead pipes within the system that need to be replaced with the next step of L C R I. So come October sixteenth, we should have a representative idea of what that looks like, and then that submission will allow us to do more field verification, know where our knowns and unknowns are, to then take necessary action.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we're we're keeping tabs on some of these chemicals.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So this is a receive and file. What would the council like to do?
Just an update to receive and file.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
That brings us to tab three.
Madam, before we can, Mayor Protem, we have some of the members from.
Thank you, councilmember. We'll be, so we have some members from the Rialto League that would like to speak, and we're, we only have one more tab left, so they were supposed to come up in oral communications, but we'll just bring them up during reports.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Protem. Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of council. For your consideration tonight is the authorization of a contract change order in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars with Boa Architecture for the design of the one-stop shop under their existing on-call agreement for professional architectural services. The scope of this project involves fully renovating and combining two vacant city-owned buildings located at one thirty-one and one forty-one South Riverside Avenue to create a one-stop customer service center that will house a combination of forty-seven staff from community development, Public Works, and the Fire Department. A conceptual floor plan of the proposed project is included in tonight's report as attachment one. The services provided within the proposed facility include, but are not limited to, land use, planning and zoning, permitting, engineering, subdivision, environmental planning, plan check review, inspections by both building and fire, business licensing, and cashiering. The one-stop-shop initiative is designed to provide Rialto residents, businesses, architects, and engineering firms, contractors, brokers, and property managers with a centralized location for services. This will not only streamline interdepartmental workflows and establish personnel resources in one center, but also modernize business operations, thereby enhancing customer services. Construction and project management costs for the overall project are estimated to be around two point five million dollars. Funding for the design services, which is this item tonight, is included in this year's Public Works budget, and staff is anticipating approximately two point seven million available through other non-general fund sources for construction costs. Final dollar amounts and funding sources will be presented for council's approval when staff requests authorization to release construction bids, should the council direct staff to move forward with this project. So thank you, and this concludes my presentation. Both the Director of Community Development and myself are available for questions.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Scott, a second by Councilmember Trujillo, and Councilmember Baca has some questions.
Yes, I believe that the one-stop-shop is is important to the city of Rialto. My question would be, is is it necessary to be at this location? Or should we be looking at a long range in terms of incorporating it and being part of the extension of City Hall where we can have everybody together versus separate if we decide to go in that direction in the future? Because we're going to be spending close to two point five million in terms of relocating most of the staff or or certain amount of staff to the one-stop area at these two-city buildings. I'd like to get other opinions too, as well. Is this the best direction to go? Or should we really think about what we want City Hall to look like in the future? And how can we consolidate the all of the departments and have a one-stop area? I believe the one-stop-shop area is important, and it's good for the city. I think people want to go to one place and be able to conduct their business without having to go to one across sections of the of our City Hall. But I just want us to think in terms of the future. I'd like to get, Kobe, what do you think of in in terms of that? Because if we're looking in terms of the future and not just now.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Baca. I think it's an excellent question for the council to consider and our executive management as well. The one-stop project concept in itself, I think, is a great concept to bring a lot of resources together. Your your question in terms of location, where's the right location? One, the the location here on Riverside Avenue is one that could work. We do have it engineered, just some preliminary engineering in it so far. We do have some parking constraints at that location, but those are things that I think we can work through with solutions. It is a project that can work and deliver there, you know, services to the community as a whole. But the question to host it at the campus, at the Civic Center campus in totality with the rest of city operations is also a great idea. I mean, there's a lot of merits and value to that, but that would be more of a, that certainly would be a more long-term solution. Long-term debt, long-term design, long-term thought process, long-term in terms of needs assessment for all city departments, and it's a project that is multiple years, for sure, versus this one is more around six months to twelve months to get underway.
Right, but I'm just thinking in terms of the amount of dollars that we're going to be spending, you know, two point five million in terms of the one-stop-shop that we would be constructing. And then if this council decided to go in a different kind of direction, we would have spent X amount of dollars there and then look at what we're going to do with that property, recreating it for some of the use if we decide to incorporate it or consolidate something that would be similar to what Ontario has or Redlands.
The one thing I wanted to mention is we are improving the building. So at the end, in let's say five years or six years, you have a long-term planner to redo City Hall and have it on one campus. We could resell or dispose of the building. It would have tremendous amount of value. We would still get some of that two point four million if that's the what the the total is in the future. So it's not a complete over expenditure at this time, in my opinion.
So it's a possibility of regaining our funds that we would at this point allocate to do the one-stop for immediate action to provide the services to our community. Or anyone that wants to do business in the city of Rialto. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I had, yes, Councilmember Scott.
Just a couple of comments in relationship to Councilmember Baca's comments. The one-stop located on Riverside Avenue is not intended to be a long-term solution. It's 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 a short-term solution for a very serious problem we have in the city where it's very hard for businesses and individuals, residents, to come in and get permits and be able to go to one place and get everything done that they need to get done. I agree with you that there is a a long-term solution of 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 a new City Hall, but that cost of that is way in excess of a hundred million dollars, and it would take much more than five years, probably, most likely, to be able to pull that off and get it get it on the plans and get it done. So this is a a short-term fix to to improve the community's ability to get permits, get projects done, and be able to meet with staff members and more cohesiveness between our departments like engineering and building services where they could all be in one building. So I support the concept of this, but I also look forward to a a long-term solution for the entire City Hall and putting everybody together.
Thank you, Councilmember Scott. So I had a motion by Councilmember Scott, a second by Councilmember Trujillo. Hearing no opposition. The motion carries. And that now brings us to reports, and we're going to bring up the North Rialto Baseball League that's here. I I want to thank the the parents and all the 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 kids that came out here in support of our our F one. And we're going to give you guys the opportunity to speak right now. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. My name is Gilbert Martinez. I'm the president of the North Rialto Little League, which is located at Bertsall Park. And this is the future of Rialto right here. These are our kids that play baseball with us. I became president about three years ago, no, three and a half years ago, and when I got there, our nightlights didn't work. We went, it took us three years, almost almost three years to get our nightlights to work to have games at night on our major, on our big field. Every time it rained, the our snack bar would flood, and the only way I could stop it from flooding was to silicone the back door, which is ridiculous. So that's going to, that's going to change in the near future. So what I want to do is I just want to introduce you to our our kids here, some of our kids, but I also want to thank the city council and also Joe Baca Junior on the Board of Supervisors, got us the money to rebuild our snack bar. So we think that's going to be a great accomplishment for our park in the future. It's going to make our park look a little better and appeal to our parents and and kids coming through in the next year or so. So that's basically it. Thank you very much.
You still need.
Thank you.
You still need the the scoreboard that needs to be repaired as I correct it.
Yeah, we have two scoreboards that turn on but don't work. And and we have a an issue with trying to water our fields because they get, they become like a dust bowl. So we have, when we try to water them, the water pressure doesn't even go from here to that screen. I have to get the city to come down and turn on an additional pump to get water pressure to water the field. Otherwise, it takes me about two hours to water the field by hand.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for your dedication to to the youth in our community.
No, we really appreciate. We really appreciate North Rialto Little League and Bertsall Park and what they're doing in providing activities for a lot of our youth to participate. I think it's an excellent sport. Both boys and girls get to participate there. And I think it's something good for the north end of Rialto because we just have Frisbee that's almost central, but not quite in terms of the league there. And besides the one that we have here at Bud Bender and the one that we have at the city of Rialto, we need other avenues for a lot of our youth to continue to participate. I just hope one day that this council will listen to me and and put Wi-Fi's at each of the parks, which I think are important for a lot of our kids to use, and they could use their homework or whatever needs to be done. We don't have to go to Starbucks, you know, or Coffee Bean, and I won't mention the other one because the other guy was sitting next to me. But where it's available, because he's an owner of one of the other coffee shops.
What is a?
I I don't know. I don't want to prejudice the the decision, but I I'll just say in reference to the other two that we want to give an opportunity for many people to use the parks and know that Wi-Fi's are available. And it shouldn't just be for those that have. It should be available for everyone in our communities. Thank you.
And while you're at it, we're at reports, so you could go ahead and continue with your report. Yeah, we're in reports.
I don't have too much to report, other than I was at the the luau, as was mentioned earlier. It was well-attended by many of our seniors. And as the Mayor Protem indicated, there's a lot of people that come from outside of the city of Rialto that participate. And it's beautiful to see a lot of our seniors that are participating and dancing and enjoying themselves and knowing that there's form of activities that are available. And, you know, I want to thank, you know, our senior center, our director, for putting on a lot of the programs. And also want to thank Cynthia Alvarez for a lot of the activities that are going on within the city of Rialto. And in each of the activities that we have, there's been presence by both the Fire Department and the Police Department staff that have attended a lot of our activities to make sure that we have a safe and sound community when we have activities. So I want to compliment them both too as well, because they're very much concerned that when individuals participate, that they know that they're going to be safe and they can enjoy the activities that the city of Rialto is putting on for them. And last but not least, I want to thank the the students that came up. I was a counselor at UCLA. That's why I mentioned what school was it from. But thank you very much for the program that you have, because I think the programs are are good programs that we need to make sure that all individuals have equality and justice and have fair employment too as well, and upper mobility within any, whether it's a city job or whether it's a government job or whether it's in the private sector. We always need voices, and we always need someone to help those that don't have the voices. And we're glad that you're here in the N L M R and providing a voice for those that don't have it and letting them know that you guys care and we care about the way our community is treated and how we treat people, because we want equality and fairness for everyone regardless of race. Thank you. And that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Baca. Move on to Councilmember Trujillo.
Yeah, I I just wanted to actually just say thank you to all the to all of our youth that were here in support of the improvements at Bertsall Park. I, you know, it's always great to see Little League get more involved with some of our policy work that we're doing here at at the City Council dais. I I also wanted to note, I think at the last council meeting I mentioned, you know, I made a, I started talking about our tree count in the city, and I wanted to be very transparent about what we found. So within the landscaping districts, they they have this tree inventory of forty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-six that were inventoried by W C A throughout the city, which is the west coast harbor, one of our contractors that actually maintain our trees. But they also noted that twenty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven tree sites were vacant. That means that the trees, for whatever reason, were pulled from our city. That's that's about a third of where our trees should be were removed. And I'm hoping that staff could create a plan to kind of start, you know, replanning those trees back. I think one of the the, one of the climate studies that we've had previously mentioned the importance of being able to bring back some of our trees to kind of cool our city down in in parts, in parts of our city that are a heat island. So I wanted to make sure that our our staff is creating a plan to try to, you know, get those trees back to our city and be able to make a lot of our paths more walkable with shade. I think that's something that our residents would really appreciate. Other than that, I I wanted to, again, welcome everyone back, that there's, our schools are still back in session. It's been about a month, and I I want to thank the Police Department for sending out an alert about, I believe it was to to be extra cautious around, you know, school buses as as they're coming back online. Unfortunately, today, we had an accident in Locust and Maraway where we had some of our students injured. So I just wanted to repeat to our residents, when you see a school bus, please be extra careful and abide by all the laws when it comes to driving, because, you know, our, we need to make sure our youth are safe and and that they're able to get home to their families in a very safe manner. And so I wanted to leave you with that. Thank you so much, and and I'll see you in September.
Thank you, Councilmember Trujillo. Councilmember Scott?
No report tonight.
And now we have a report from, I I have no report, but we do have one from our. And now, we have a report from, I have no report, but we do have one from our chief, Brian Parks. It's going to do what's going on in Rialto.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Ms. Alvarez was unable to be with us tonight. She's at training, so she called in for the relief pitcher, so we'll try and carry it through for her. So, that's right. So, in the spirit of our conversation this afternoon and how we appreciate our seniors, National Senior Appreciation Day, we're going to see a continued entire month of it next month as Cynthia and her crew works to celebrate our seniors. Starting off on Wednesday, September 4th, at the Grace Fergus Center, 1411 South Riverside, we're going to be looking at the Sunrise Church Peace Center Mobile Food Distribution from nine to 12. Ice cream is back for the Blizzard Blitz.
Are you going to be there?
Ed, ice cream.
They said they'd bring a peach cobbler for you.
It's not for seniors, oh yeah, seniors.
So, that is Thursday, September 5th, again at the Senior Center. Our Rialto Sports Hall of Fame inductions and dinner, Saturday, September 4th, at Carl Johnson Center, four to eight, 214 North Palm. I'm told there still are tickets. If you want to contact the Recreation Department at 421-4949, there's still tickets available. You will have to RSVP for that event. On Thursday, September 12th, the Senior Health and Wellness Expo, again at the Grace Fergus Senior Center. Whoop, Gabe, you got ahead of me. On Thursday, September 12th, again, we have the Crafts and Hobby Fair at the Senior Center, partnership with the Feeding America Food Distribution Group, again at the Senior Center, Wednesday, September 18th, from nine to 11:00. And we are collaborating with Albertson's for a free flu shock clinic, Wednesday, September 18th, at the Senior Center. Our annual celebration with our furry friends, Petapalooza, is back Saturday, September 24th, here at the Civic Center, nine to one, always a great event. Viva La Fiesta at Jerry Eaves Park, 5:30 to 9:30 on September 28th. And one of our honorable and more celebrated events, Walk Like Mad, Saturday, October 5th, Joe Sampson Park. Ceremonies begin at 8:15, the 5K begins at nine o'clock. And then, last but not least, we have the Black on the Block, Saturday, October 5th, at Rialto City Park, from 10:00 to 4:00. And with that, I will do a public safety plug that this, September is also National Preparedness Month as we start ramping up toward the great, the earthquake shakeout, October 17th annually. So, start working on your preparedness kits. A lot of social media coming out on that over the next few weeks, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Chief. Madam City Kirk, do you have anything? City Manager? Mr. Correio? City Treasurer? City Attorney? Chief Kling?
No, sir.
Sure?
I'm going to give him a voice.
Well, there's already someone that's, someone else is already in line in front of you, apparently.
I wish King a birthday. He just had a birthday.
You bunch of haters.
And so, we do, we do have, we have three birthdays. So, we have Councilmember Trujillo.
Happy Birthday.
Happy Birthday. Count Barbara McGee is now 21.
Twenty-seven.
And, and the Chief, so happy birthday.
So, how old is the Chief then?
How old are you?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, so we want to wish them all a very happy birthday. There was some cake in the break room, so there's still some. If anybody else has anything else, if not, I'll get a motion.
Move for adjournment.
Second. I got a motion by Councilmember Baca, a second by Councilmember Trujillo.